Good evening, everyone. I call the regular meeting for February the 22nd, 2024 to order. Obviously, this meeting is being held in person. I'll take this opportunity to remind folks that this would be a grand time to make sure your electronic devices are set to silent, et cetera. I've already done that. Next is a roll call. Sir?
Counselor Mark Eastman.
Here.
Counselor Paul Gobbin. Counselor Tracy Hare.
Here.
Mayor Paul Bissonette.
Here.
Counselor Dan Ormsby. Counselor Steve Bishop.
Here.
Counselor Ed Rankin.
Here.
Thank you. Next item is presentation of any town council recognitions. We don't have any. Item four is to consider the minutes of our previous meetings, and we have the minutes from the February 8th, 2024 town council meeting. I will assume everyone's had a chance to review those. How would the council like to proceed?
I'll send it through.
Okay.
Second one. Questions? A favor. Next is to receive and review correspondence. I have a piece of correspondence I received this evening that I'll talk about later under one of the discussion items. But we also have the Verona Police Call on January the 31st, 2024. The next is ordinances to consider and introduce. We have a first reading this evening. Amendments to Town Code, Chapter Six, Business Regulations, Sections 2.3 to 2.6.
After our last meeting, I incorporated our discussion into our current Chapter Six under festivals and the subsequent, the change of the number of events, the difference between for-profit and nonprofit, et cetera, et cetera. It's the copy that you have and the copy that's out there has strike-throughs for deletions and double underline for new language so that when you... And this would be scheduled for a public hearing at the first meeting in March, March 14th.
I will assume everyone's had a chance to review the changes that's been made for our review. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Excuse me. We can't hear you. I don't know if your mics are on, but...
Our mics are just for the TV. I can try to speak louder. Yep. My voice isn't carrying.
I was gonna say, I don't think anyone's ever told Mayor Bissonette that you can't hear him.
Everyone, and every one of my elementary school teachers right now is having the time, if they've seen that, because my voice is always carried. Yeah, I'll try, I'll try to do better. All right, so with this first reading, we will have, the public hearing will be on the 14th. Do we have any action on this this evening?
No.
Thank you. The next item, next is discussion items, and the first item under that is the Services Committee report from earlier this evening.
Yep. We just appointed two people to the baseball committee, Robert England, Josh Jackson. And that was it, very briefly.
Those are not on the agenda, but down under appointments, you should, the council should vote, the recommendation of the committee is for the council to act on that. So you can add them under item nine in order to do those appointments as recommendations from services. It's my...
Yeah.
I didn't put that on the agenda. That's my fault.
Yes, the committee has suggested that we accept their...
Great, thank you. Questions on that? Infrastructure Committee report, also from earlier this evening.
Yep, the Infrastructure Committee met with the Naramessick-Orland Watershed Stewardship Initiative, and we made the recommendation to the council to be part of that initiative.
That would be on the next agenda for action.
Thank you. Next is Habitat for Humanity Home Repair Program update.
Walk right through. Hi, everyone. I'm Sherri Billings from Habitat for Humanity.
And I'm Vanessa from Bucksport Bay Healthy Communities Coalition.
So we just wanted to give you an update about our program, what's been happening, what some successes are that we've had, and what some challenges are. And so I wanted to start by, I'm just gonna give you guys this flyer that we've used to publicize the program. There's a bunch there, more than you need. But that gives you some information. If you weren't here when we came up with this project, the criteria is on that flyer for how people become eligible. What I'm gonna pass out now is just a report that I did, letting folks know, letting you all know how many repairs and modifications we've done, what those look like. So I've made a table here that has the job name, and those are all in code because we want to protect people's confidentiality if they, if they choose to have their information private. And then what the work was that we did, and then what our cost was and what the town's cost was. And I can, I'll summarize. We put in a lot of railings. We put in a lot of railings and grab bars, which I didn't really anticipate that there was gonna be so much of that. But when people have difficulty with mobility, having a railing or something that they can grab onto to be able to move around their house is amazing. So we're doing a lot of that, a lot of grab bars, a lot of entryways. We've done a lot of removing rotting stairs and replacing with good solid, sturdy stairs. We destroyed some concrete, which was fun, smashed away at it with a sledgehammer, and that was great. And put in some nice, solid, pressure-treated stairs after that. That's really the bulk of what we have been doing in terms of work that's been getting done. On the other, on the flip of that page, you'll see that under what's gone well, we have some really great reports from people who've been able to use this program. And you'll see the quotes there. My new steps are so sturdy, I never have to worry about falling anymore getting into my house. This, one woman said she had not been upstairs in her house for six years. Yes, six years. She had not been able to get to the second floor of her home and had just been living on the first floor and just not trying to make a problem for anyone over that. But we put railings up, and she was able to get upstairs and see what was up there that she needed to deal with. Family members have contacted us and said we were so afraid that she was gonna fall, break a hip on that rotting wood that was slippery, that created an uneven surface. We were afraid that it was gonna cause medical problems. And we worked with one family who was afraid that their loved one was gonna end up in care, you know, not being able to stay at home. So folks that have received the service have been overwhelmingly grateful and have had wonderful things to say about it. So I'm not sure if you all know exactly how we go about this. So I wanna explain that. What we do is when somebody wants to apply for the program, they contact the Bucksport Bay Healthy Communities Coalition. So, which is Vanessa. And they do the application through the Bucksport Bay Healthy Communities Coalition, and then Vanessa passes those on to me. Then we schedule a site visit where we go, Habitat goes, and Vanessa goes, and we meet with the homeowner and figure out what's been going on for them. You know, what, what functionally do they need to be able to operate in their home well, you know, maximally? Or what kinds of other services might they need to be able to say, stay, to stay safe and healthy at home? So we come together and we talk about all these things. So while I'm going around with our construction guy, honestly trying to keep him from doing every bit of work, he just wants to help everybody and he wants to do everything. While I'm going around with him trying to figure out what it is that we can do, what falls within the scope of this program, Vanessa's meeting with people and talking about the Thrive program. And I don't know if you wanna talk a little bit about that.
So it's giving them, I give them an emergency magnet with all the phone numbers for appropriate resources. I leave them the application if they wanna be more involved and complete the full questionnaire for Thrive. Often, I'm talking to them about, you know, transportation or the food services that we have available, and just trying to let them know that there's someone there to go to beyond what's happening in the home at that moment, leave my card, and just have a conversation with them about the resources, so.
Yeah, so we feel like it's working really well. We have had some challenges. One is when we, one time, we have shown up at a house and there have been needs there that were much greater than anything that we could tackle. And, you know, so really, my purview is like, okay, this is, this does not fall under me, so I could just walk away now, except I'm a social service person and I can't just walk away and not give people any place to turn. So Vanessa and I worked together, and we made a referral to the USDA for this person so that they could apply for a grant. USDA has grants and very low-interest loans to be able to help people do repairs in their homes. So we hooked her up with the USDA to be able to apply for a grant. What, what we can't do is fill the paperwork out for and make sure it all gets done, but I feel like we've done our, our due diligence there. But there are other folks that have called and said things that right off the bat I knew, nope, this isn't gonna, this isn't gonna, like, my furnace doesn't work. Yes, that's a problem. I'm not saying that problem doesn't need to be addressed, but it's not something this program can address. So what we're trying to do, what I've noticed, is that there needs to be a more comprehensive network of folks that are, of agencies, of agencies, not just people, agencies that are doing home repair and, and, you know, safety and accessibility work. Because there are a number of us in the county that are doing this, and we need to be working towards greater collaboration. And I feel like in some ways we are, because people have heard about our program here and they wanna replicate it where they are. So that's a really wonderful thing, I think. Another challenge that we have had is we are stoic mainers and we don't like to ask for help. So we went, we had a little lull where we weren't getting many applications. So we did, you know, we put in article in the enterprise, we put these flyers out, we went to the senior center, we did all sorts of stuff, and the applications started rolling in, but when I get applications, I've been asking people, so what? Did you know about the program? And often people are like, yeah, I heard about it. Well, why were you hesitant to apply? Because I thought somebody else needed it more than me, which is kinda how we are, you know? And so what I've been telling people is, if you qualify for the program and you have a need, the program is for you. And if we all sit around and say, there's somebody that needs it more than me, then it's not gonna get used, it's not gonna be there for anyone, because it's gonna look like it's not necessary. And we know that that's not true. So we have, I, when I went to the mailbox today, I had three applications. So I feel like we're kind of picking things up again.
And Aiden Ability Friendly did ask us to do a master class on this program for other communities to replicate, so we did present and do a PowerPoint as well.
So in terms of sustainability, what we're looking at now is, we have applied for grant funding to offset some of our labor costs. We'll see how that works. We are also planning a volunteer orientation for the spring. We haven't set a date yet, but the way that frankly, I designed this program in my head was that we would have a project manager, a construction manager, that would get the ball rolling here, but then through doing good work in the community, we would draw people who also wanted to do good work in the community, then we can train volunteers to do this program. And then under the supervision of our project manager, we could have volunteers in the field doing some of this work. And we, I was right, people are coming, people have heard about it, and we have four or five right now, people who want to volunteer. So my next thing that we're gonna tackle is getting these volunteers on board to be actually able to be out in the field doing things, but we have to give them proper training and safety training first. And we are working with Emily Fitzgerald at The Village to get more volunteers. She's been advertising for us to get volunteers. And so we're happy to take questions.
I just wanna note for the benefit of the audience and the council that this was a pilot project. This first year, the town utilized $15,000 in ARPA funds to fund this pilot project, to fund this need that, that the council has been wrestling with for most of the years I've been here on how to get a program that did these safety and accessibility repairs. And when the, when you see your budget, it, the, this program remains in it going from a pilot to an actual program, just based on the success it's had and based on this very collaborative nature of work that, that's being done, so.
For the same amount, 15?
That's what I've got in for now, yes.
I think it's fascinating that you can achieve so much safety work. The highest grant or gift to a household was $1,072.
I know.
And if you think of all of those folks getting help and compared to the lift assist that the fire department does, I think it's, it's a really wonderful...
That's a great point.
That's what I was hitting on. With my work and experience on public safety, I had on this last year with you, is that we have so many places that we could not get people out of their houses because it would not hold two or three firefighters with a stretcher and the person on it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, everything that you're doing here with that is a really key part of helping everybody with that.
I think one of the other things that's true is when people have mobility issues and they're not able to move around their homes, they're not able to do like maintenance and cleaning and organizing that they would otherwise do. So being able to help people be mobile and move around their homes is going to make accessing them when they're in their homes much easier for any EMS that has to come out there.
And prevent homelessness.
Yes.
And they're happier. They're happier.
I'm surprised you're not getting more of the bathroom grab bars and things like that. There's a huge need of that.
I know.
But for your first year, you've had 11 cases here in Bucksport, right? So I feel like that's, that's a strong number for a first year on a pilot program.
And there were three more applications.
I have, I had just three today. I, I anticipate that by the time we are done with this fiscal year, at the end of June, we will have met our goal of doing 20.
It's interesting, too, because when you, going back to that stoic maintainer piece, I think there might be some people, especially along that mindset of, well, there are people who need it more than me. You're looking at 11 households here that you were able to improve quality of life for people who have an average age of just under 75 years old. And if I'm doing some quick math here, the, the cost of the town of Bucksport was just under $2,500, and the total cost was $4,500. So I think maybe there's that mindset that this type of work is gonna cost, how many, here's the main phrase, an arm and a leg. Perhaps, when in actuality it doesn't, and I think that could be part of the, the selling of this, too, as we move forward of, hey, you know what? Some of these repairs that are gonna drastically improve your quality of life aren't gonna cost an arm and a leg. And I don't wanna equate that quality of life to an arm and a leg, but other people are, and so let's take that away from them if we can. But I think this is great. I, I, you know, I, because extrapolate that cost out over, instead of serving 11 families, you've been able to serve 50.
Yeah.
You're still coming in far under what people might assume you would be at.
And I think I'm remiss in not mentioning a community partner who doesn't show up, you know, isn't a service provider, but Jim McCrum over at Hammond Lumber has given us an amazing discount to be able to buy materials. So we're doing, he's allowing us to buy materials at cost plus 10%, which is what their employee discount is, and that's really made a huge difference as well.
And she's developed a nice sign that goes in the yard that advertises it to other people who might see that and say, now I wanna do this.
And we don't, you know, if people will accept the sign, we want, you know, I encourage them, if people see that you're doing it, and, and somebody actually did say, I saw my neighbor had the sign, and I saw her new steps, and then I asked her about it. So we want people to know that the program is out there, we want them to know it's helping people just like them. You know, we don't, we don't want there to be a bunch of barriers for people reaching out if they need help with this stuff. So, yeah, we have, we have pretty signs that we put in front of people's houses for a week or so while we're there working.
Yeah, I mean, just, I mean, I don't know the scope of the project, but I won't go on and on about it, but you've got one here listed, there was a demolition of concrete steps, and they were removed, and you rebuilt the entry, and you added railings, and that, the price tag on that came in at just over $200.
And you know what was the best? I got to meet the coolest guy. Some of these people that I am going to do, they have like the history of this town.
Of course they do.
They know all sorts of things. They're amazing people.
No, this is great.
But it'll take me like a half day when I'm supposed to be there for an hour, because I just, like, really? And then what happened? What used to be over there?
Great presentation. Thank you very much. This is great information. I think as we start talking about the budget, as we move forward, this will seem to have support, so.
As you go through, and I know that somebody else is perfect, but are you noticing, or are you thinking about the fact that if we didn't see or do the fire alarms, why are there many people that want them, but they don't want to put them up?
Yeah, that's actually in our list of allowable stuff. We'd be happy to do that. Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Great. Next, we have the Reach Schools here for a request for sponsorship.
Hey, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, sir?
Thank you for inviting us and letting us have this opportunity to ask you for a sponsorship for our trip to Boston. And I'm gonna start by explaining a little bit about the Reach School, because there's a lot of misconceptions about what it is in the community. And so first of all, we're a private, nonprofit, alternative program. We're not actually part of the RSU, but we do contract with the RSU to give students the opportunity to find success in an alternative environment. We've been in operation since 1987, and during those 37 years, we've helped hundreds of students graduate who may not have otherwise. We focus on building students up, becoming part of a community, and highlighting their passions. We currently have a population of 22 students. 14 of those live within the RSU, and all of those students are enrolled in the RSU. I forgot to introduce myself, because I was like, yep, I'm Seth. I'm the director of the Reach School, and this is Madison Smith, and she's a senior at the Reach School. This year is gonna be the largest graduating class the Reach has ever had, with 10 possible graduating students. These students were in eighth grade when COVID hit, and they all missed out on their class trip, all, no matter what, what school they were in at that time, they missed their, their class trip. We decided, it was actually at the camping trip last year, it's a, we typically go on a camping trip each year, and we saw that these students were willing to take risks, that we built a community that they were safe to take risk, and, and we said, what if we brought them to a city? And so at that time, we decided that we tried to go to Boston, and so over the past year, we've been raising funds. And so currently, our plan is to go to a larger city every four years. We still in replacement of our annual camping trip. And so this year, we're traveling by sea or bus, doing the classic Boston trip with Quincy Market, Boston Common. We're gonna have a sit-down meal at Fire and Ice. We're gonna see the Blue Man Group and stay in the hotel, and the next day, the Duck Boat Tour and the Aquarium. It's gonna be a very busy two days, and, but it'll be a really good time. And the trip will cost roughly $16,000, which I've been doing this a long time, but I hadn't done a trip in a while, and so it came in at about twice as much as what the last time I'd done a trip, because hotels, as everybody knows, have skyrocketed. Everything skyrocketed, and I expected 25% increase instead of 100% increase, but that's okay. We also want to make sure that none of our students have to pay for anything there except for maybe souvenirs. And so that would take another $1,000 to ensure that they have cash for lunches and drinks and things like that. And so many of our students' families struggle financially, and we don't feel it's right to send home fundraisers or request, families, members donate the profit, like $20 cookie dough is, is not something we're gonna send home to our families, because it's something that they can't afford, but they may push themselves and limit themselves. And so we've been working on fundraisers that highlight our students' creativity and interests. For example, this fall, we designed, built, and manned a set at the Friar at the Fort. It went amazing until it didn't, and the Friar at the Fort was cut short due to the tragedy in Lewiston, and we made about a third of what we had anticipated. We're also generous to Friar at the Fort, who also is a nonprofit, to like, we, we didn't take as much as like we could have requested, but that's okay. We also had a booth at the Vade Festival, and Steve came over and donated money from the car show, and we greatly appreciate that. We've set up booths at the Vendor Benders the past couple of months, and we're gonna continue to do that over this summer. And at those, we spell, we sell crafts and arts made by the students and some of our supporters, and as well as baked goods, also made by some of our students' families. We are, this spring, we're renting the Alamo for a night to hold a concert by Crampton, and at that time, we're also gonna have a silent auction of student and staff art pieces or other creations. And so we're working towards it to fundraise, but the one year was not enough to raise $16,000. And so we are well short of our goal. We're at about $4,000 right now. And we do have funds in reserve that we are able to be able to pay for it, but those funds are in reserve, and our building is from 1890, and we are currently trying to fix the foundation to be able to have, to stop the leak, so we can then start repairing the basement, which is another classroom. And we also need to have that reserve in order to, we're gonna graduate 10 students this year, and we really need about 20 to break even. And so starting the year with 12 next year is, you know, something that we have to consider, and so requesting the money of you would be, some money from you would be great. And as far as I know, the Reach has never asked the town to support it in any way. It wasn't Crampton's way, it's not a comfortable way for me, but we have, we've only asked that you allow us to educate your students that find, need an alternative setting to find success. We would greatly appreciate it if you'd consider supporting our trip with a donation. Thanks. Thanks.
I've got a few. I just want to make sure the numbers are correct. Your total goal is sixteen thousand, correct?
Yes.
And you have ten kids that are going?
We have twenty, no, we're bringing all of them.
But there's ten or se, by ten or seniors.
Ten or seniors, yes.
Okay, so you have twenty-two kids.
Yeah.
How many chaperones?
Currently, we'll definitely be bringing three. We're having a little wiggle room in that because our school does bring students in and have students leave. So if we, if we have paid for another person and we have room, we'll invite another chaperone. But if we also, if we pick up another student, then that would replace that spot too. We have three staff members and so the three of us are.
So twenty-three people?
Yeah.
And you said two days. Is it one overnight or two overnights?
One overnight.
One overnight?
Yeah.
And how many of the twenty-two are, are Bucksport residents, do you know?
So, so fourteen of our students are Bucksport residents and then we had two students that were not interested in attending and those, both of those students were Bucksport students. So twelve are Bucksport students.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So when you said you were at four, is four the deficit or for what you've raised?
Four is what we've raised, yes.
I was just, I wasn't clear when you.
Okay, yeah, go on.
Want to know the number. The goal was sixteen and I didn't know if it was with that.
So you've got the money in reserve to do this, but it's going to tap into severely your.
Yeah. And the plan is, because like I said, we kind of just decided to do this in the spring, is that we'll continue to fundraise after this and replace as much as we can. But then as soon as we break even, we'll be putting it towards the next trip, which will be in four years. And so the next time, we'd hope that we'll be all set and be able to spend more time planning and not to worry about it, but.
And do you have a fundraising projection for what you're hoping to be able to glean in your upcoming events?
I am hopeful I'll get to around ten thousand. Is not knowing exactly what will come from the night with Crampton. I do think that could be a really great night. And, but that's something that, once again, our community, we, we're, we're doing by donation because we want everybody to attend that would like to. And so it's hard to decide, like, there's a hundred and forty seats. I don't think we'll fill them all, but I think there'll be a good number of people. A lot of people miss Crampton. And, but I, I don't know what the average ticket price will be or, yeah.
Where would the money come from, Sue, for us? What, where would it be?
We have some unexpended money in appropriations for outside agencies this year that hasn't been requested because their agency is somewhat stagnant at this point. That you could access some funds that wouldn't impact them this year if they're.
Yeah, they've already, what they would have spent would have already been gone.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd be comfortable with ten.
Yeah, that's, that's quite right. That's what I was thinking, yeah.
Did you say this was going to be an annual?
No.
Or this is a one-shot?
One out of four.
So we're, our plan is to do it every four years. So after a student's been at Reach for four years, you know, we've really built this relationship. And so it is kind of a send-off for those students, but it's also just not feasible to do it every year. And so that would, our goal is so everybody would get the opportunity to go on one trip with us.
And I caught a piece of that, if I'm correct, you were saying that each of these kids have a, a different life scenario, but you do like a camping trip to help give them confidence?
Yeah, so.
And give them a city scenario, give them different life aspects?
Right, yeah. And I mean, a lot of our students haven't visited a lot of places and even if they have, they've not experienced some of these things that we're going to do. And so, yes, we want to give them, we're so happy that they built the trust in us to bring them to these places and.
Is this your first time in Boston?
Yes, it is.
It's exciting.
Yeah, that would be quite an experience. I get to drive one of those duck boats.
Wear a sheet to the Blue Man Group.
Yeah, the duck boat is worth it. The Blue Man Group is worth it. Yeah, it's quite an experience, so.
Yeah.
I'd be comfortable with ten with as much involvement in what they, you know, what they attribute to the town. Always hearing your name or your students' names, so your presence is definitely seen.
And I especially like the fact that we have unused funds from a, from a different community-oriented project that's sitting there not being used right now and that, at this, at this phase of the year, at this time, it's a good, it's a good place for it.
Is that fund, does it have the whole ten in it? Do you have?
It, it has more than that.
And that's all she said. No, I'm just kidding. So we would put this on the next agenda for the council to take action or is that something we give?
Yes, to resolve to, in the same way that you did with robotics for the five-year donation, you would do this as a donation to, a sponsorship. It, it was a sponsorship for the robotics team too. It would be a sponsorship for the Reach School Boston trip.
I'd be in favor of doing it, not as a, a reoccurring scenario, just as a one-time scenario because we have the money right now. Not, I don't know, for years, I'm sorry.
So if I'm hearing everyone correctly, we're comfortable with at our next meeting having a resolve to approve this or to consider this in the amount of ten thousand dollars?
Correct.
Yes.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you. That is considerably more than we ever hoped for, so.
I, I want to note what an asset your school is to this community. And, and one more thing that makes Bucksport Bucksport is having alternatives for its children and children of the region. I get a little teary-eyed only because that's, we always say that our, our youth is our best economic development tool and their education is that. So having this, you know, having the town participate in this experience and recognition of that, I think is, is a, a great idea. But I did want to notice, note that I, I think that having your school here is a huge asset.
Thank you.
I'll second that. And I've been to a couple of events and bid on silent auction items from your students that I really wanted and I've never won.
No, yeah, we're, we're excited for that. And that lays a lot of pressure off that event and allows it to be what it's meant to be. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. All right. Next is goals and objectives and the priorities. I know we submitted those. We've had, we had a conversation in our last meeting too. I've taken a look at the submissions that we have and we, we can certainly, I mean, I could go through a fairly rudimentary stack ranking of those. I, I do have to question, and Councilor Eastman brought this up too, and, and he's right. We probably should consider taking action on this in our next meeting when, unless there's something unforeseen, we know we'll have everyone here. But, you know, as we, as we stack rank these and I look at, and even like when I look at my stack ranking, I left some things out that I know are bound for discussion and I kind of added more importance to some things that could move away. So like, for example, the waterfront, everybody that's ranked this in one form or another has the waterfront down here as, and then we, we have four people that have mentioned the waterfront, dams and the, and the landfill situation. And then we have three, and we have a list of five that have received three priorities, for lack of a better word. So I think, I mean, if we want to talk about any of these this evening, I'm certainly open to that, but I would just ask the council to consider that maybe we don't take any action or, or anything like that on these, until we have a full.
Motion to table?
Yeah, I'd like to discuss it.
There's been a motion to table that. Do you want to hold on to motion to table?
It's a discussion item. You don't even have to motion to.
Perfect.
The table, it's not a resolve. It's, you were going to talk about it, now you're not.
No, no, thank you.
Move it along.
The next item under, and last item under discussion is the Bucksport Mill landfill correspondence in response. I'll kick it over to the town manager to.
As you know, because I forwarded you an email that I received from Karen Knutti at DEP in response to my request for information on a meeting of some sort that was held with some staff at DEP with Bucksport Mill LLC in regard to the Bucksport Mill landfill and their request to the DEP for more time to evaluate their options and to not do things that had been request, required for actions such as the leachate pond issues and the closure of the north face and the replacement of the interim cap monitoring wells. They asked that that all be held in abeyance as well while they evaluated options. And you're also aware that I responded to that on behalf of the town, expressing my disappointment that this had been done in the first place and that there were a number of very serious issues that should have been created and that we had been notified in March of twenty twenty-three that they were evaluating options and that extending it beyond January of twenty-four, they've had enough time to evaluate whatever options they had. But the most concerning thing in the letter was a reference to the fact that the state might need landfill capacity and of some type. That was somewhat of a surprise to me in that I've never heard anyone at DEP talk about that being anything. And, and no one that I've spoken to there has indicated that that was, I, I'm not sure if that's one of the list of things that AIM told them they should think about in, in doing that extension or what it was. But one point one million cubic yards is not a lot of capacity. That's the total license capacity of that facility. The facility is an unlined, except for an ash area. There's no secondary treatment for leachate. There's a whole lot of things that would not allow that site, as it stands today, to be utilized as a municipal solid waste landfill, which requires a whole host of other things. And one point one million cubic yards of capacity is not sufficient capacity for the kind of investment it would take to do that, which leaves a construction and demolition debris landfill as, as the most likely. But this was a generator-owned facility. It made sense for there to be a landfill associated with a paper mill that at one time employed a thousand people and was the lifeblood of the community. All of that is gone. The only thing that remains in the ownership of Bucksport Mill is the water system, which has its own set of questions at the moment, and the landfill. Their, their initial request to the town to take ownership was reviewed and rejected. Their options remain to ask another town, which is a highly unlikely event, or some combination of a new generator. Well, there's no generator and there's no land to put one on. And that then, the, the last one is if the state took ownership. And that is a completely different thing. But the state taking ownership for one point million cubic yards for construction and demo also makes no sense fiscally for them. It doesn't solve anything long-term, but the long-term issue with, with space in Maine is not for construction and demolition. The, the problem for, for disposal is municipal solid waste. But beyond that, the, the town has taken a methodical approach, which I, I know everyone doesn't think is the right approach, but we had a proposal, it was evaluated, it was rejected. There's a tremendous amount of community's support of that rejection. And then the town went to the steps of creating an ordinance that would require any attempt by Bucksport Mill to sell it or to utilize it for something different, to have not just a state permitting process, but a local permitting process too. And we were careful to include things that didn't supersede state authority, but, which required many things that no longer exist at that site that are tremendously expensive to replace, such as a fire suppression system, which is not the pile of dirt described in the letter that they deposited there. So when I got this, you know, we tried to be transparent and I, it went to our local paper, it went to all of you, it went to Don White and who distributes to the group that he and others are, are working with, the sort of next steps. I had a conversation with the commissioner last Thursday when this went out. I will be seeing her again this coming Thursday at another meeting that I will be, and I'm expecting a response to the email. So that is, that's where this all stands. This, you know, I. It has been suggested that our state representatives write letters to the DEP in support of the town's position and, and encouraging the department to back up this bus and move forward with what they had originally requested, which was a closure plan for this facility. So that's where I, that's everything that I know pretty much about what there is. There's been nothing else since that came out other than a lot of interest. But I, I am happy, any, answering questions that anyone has or? This is what I've done thus far. I, I've described what I'm waiting to do next. If there's something else that the council wants done, I need to know what that is.
I have a couple of questions when you're ready.
Sure.
So you are, you're still actively involved with DEP out of Augusta, correct?
That's correct.
And what, what's your title or your position right now on that?
I'm the chair of the Board of Environmental Protection.
Okay. So, so yeah, you're, you're, you're still very actively involved with that. As we move forward, what would you recommend in the goal-setting process for this based on the letters that we have now? Should, should we continue to try to work more on the DEP side of things, trying to?
The, the, the State Department that can affect closure, that can order the closure is the DEP. They, they regulate that. You can, there is political pressure and there's, there's regulation, I, I guess, you know, which is why I suggested our, our state representatives being involved. But DEP is the one that, that can require that, that this closure plan be done. And I think that an appeal to them, a strong appeal to them to take that action as opposed to whatever this is. I, I think that a lot of people in the department had no idea that this meeting happened or that there was anything said because there's nothing in writing issued to Bucksport Mill that approves this, that says you get more time.
I have a thought. I mean, I'd like the council to write a letter to DEP and put some teeth in it a little bit as well to support the town manager's role.
I could, I could get behind that and supporting Sue with.
I could, I could get behind that in supporting Sue with her role. I just want to treat DEP as an asset to our team.
With respect.
With respect, exactly. You know what I mean? As we go through that process, I want them to acknowledge how we feel and where we're at, and I would like them to support us in that.
Sure, yeah. If it's the pleasure of the council to write a letter, I don't know if it's fair to assume, I would, I would be happy to draft something if that is what the council is comfortable with. I would certainly want input on that. And then we could consider it and do whatever we need to do there. And I think that could be important alongside our representatives doing that.
Maybe contact Councilor Gavin Ormsby, just to make sure they're on board.
Yep, absolutely. Don, yeah, you can come up. I'll call for a public, yep. Any other questions or?
Tracy, you had something.
No, that was really just sort of getting behind the town manager at this point, because I think it's, it could get bigger before it gets smaller, right? So just fast to show support.
Have we contacted our local representatives?
One of them was in the room earlier and knows that we were talking about her letter. And he indicated that he would contact the other one to do that if it was what the council wanted, thought was a good idea.
Me personally, I very, very much like them too, yeah.
Yep. My two cents on this is this, and I'm going to be relatively, not that I'm not, but I'm going to be fairly transparent here. And I do appreciate what Deputy Mayor Bishop said along the lines of continuing to consider the DEP an asset here. I'm not trying to make anybody look bad on any level with what I'm about to say, but there's a perception problem now. There is, I read that email last week and threw my pen. I was pretty unhappy, because now in writing from the Department of Environmental Protection, it states Bucksport Mill also requested additional time to explore options for the future of the landfill other than closure. And in light of the current limitations on landfill disposal capacity in Maine, the department agreed to a limited amount of additional time before requiring closure, blah, blah, blah. My issue with that is this, and I'm a big believer in that you have to manage perception because perception can become reality. The problem with that is that perception can be fueled by a lot of other things besides the truth. Therefore, it's inherent on you to manage perception. And I believe it is inherent on the part of the Department of Environmental Protection to begin managing perception here. I'm not calling anybody out. I am not stating that I don't want to work with anybody. What I am stating is that there is now a perception, if you pick up the enterprise today or whatever, that there is the potential for the landfill over by the mill to reopen. And I have every faith in the town manager that that is highly unlikely to happen. But the perception is otherwise, and that's creating work for your council, that's creating work for your town manager, and it's creating a lot of angst and worry for the taxpayers in the town of Bucksport who are paying attention. I promised myself all day I would maintain my temper on this.
You're doing well.
I'll try. I just, I, I'll sum it by saying this. There was a meeting between the Department of Environmental Protection and Bucksport Mill LLC at some point between last August and now, at which Bucksport Mill LLC discussed some of the steps they had taken to make things better at the former landfill site, none of which they had communicated to the town of Bucksport that I'm aware of. And if I'm mistaken, please forgive me. And this is cited in this email as progress. Okay, I'll accept it as progress. I will call out, though, that it's years and years and years overdue. I will call out that it does highlight that in replacement of that fire suppression system there's now, and I don't mean to be facetious or snarky about this, but now a pile of soil up there that I'm sure our deputy fire chief and our director of public safety feel great about. I'm going to stop there, except to say, and then as, that is being used as a justification, at least that's the perception. That is being used as the justification to grant Bucksport Mill LLC more time to consider options. And what it doesn't state here, it doesn't establish a timeframe, is that one week, is that six months? And what it doesn't do is state, it states for the future of the landfill other than closure. And my question remains, why are we considering anything but closure? Period. I'll stop there.
One more question for you, Sue. You alluded to the fact, or you said something that certain or potentially key people within the DEP were not aware of certain elements of this. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Do you feel that now and/or moving forward with the letter from the council that you will be able to appropriately get their attention to make some effect?
I think it's fair to say that we have the attention of the people who are not privy to this. I'm waiting to find out what that reaction translates to at DEP level.
Okay. When would you know that?
I'm sure I will know by next Thursday.
Okay. Anything else from the council?
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, is it possible to revisit the attorney's opinion on our jurisdiction to do something locally?
We can certainly do that. The problem is there's no notice of violation. There's no, at the state level, for any of this being a violation of, it's all written in terms of something that isn't done, but NOVs are completely different things for enforcement purposes for the state. And it's their inspection and their report that is what's at issue. So I'm happy to see if there's some way that, since these conditions, can we somehow appropriate that information? But if the town makes the decision that it, that the approach to this would be a war as opposed to a negotiation to get what you want, that the cost of that in terms of legal fees will be enormous. And starting the negotiation with lawyers fighting is, there will be no more conversation and it will be excessively expensive. I am not suggesting that the town not defend itself, not fight for what it wants in this regard. I am talking about process, which is that getting a legal opinion and doing is one thing, getting the lawyer to argue with the lawyers somewhere else about something is quite another at this point where we are.
I mean, I tend to agree that we haven't tried the letter from full council yet, and there's one more meeting to happen, and perhaps we could keep that on our radar if we get nowhere with sort of the diplomatic route.
Exactly. Yeah, I think that.
It's perhaps fired up as I might be on this subject. I agree 100%. There is a process here. I am not trying to vilify the DEP. They should be our ally in this process, and I fully intend to do that and engage them in it. So I just wanted to say that part out loud because I think Sue is 100% correct. There is a process still to follow, and I think this council has been extraordinarily patient. I, for one, may have exhibited that my patience might be growing finite, but that said, Sue is advising us on the improvement path. Before I forget, because I've forgotten it twice now, and I mentioned a correspondence that was part of this. I did receive correspondence, and I believe everyone that's here this evening from the council has read it, although I didn't see you read it. Okay. From James and McCormick Economy of Bucksport voicing their opposition to the reopening of the landfill as well. And what I must say is a letter written in extremely good penmanship. So thank you for that.
Just, I don't want you to think that I'm not unhappy about.
Oh, no, I know you're not.
I am, I'm a very process-oriented individual, and I think it's fair to say that when it comes to the topic of landfills, I know my stuff. I have a number of years of experience in a number of ways and a view of the regulatory process from the inside that I think can benefit us, you know. If the, end of the day, if there was some application and it was granted and there was an appeal of that, it goes to the board. I couldn't sit on that appeal, but I could defend the town in it. And I have some level of respect for the fact that I'm a fact-based decision-maker. And while I'm not as wound up as the mayor, it doesn't mean that I don't care. You know, it's, I really believe that the calmer you are, the better it is in the face of unreasonableness.
I would agree.
What's a reasonable timeline for a more involved DEP response from this? What's a good goal for us to look at?
I think, a good, because the things that have been mentioned that are missing is a request for the timeline. A request for what? So you've said, how mu, what's the timeline? There's no, there's no record then legally, how can they do it? They don't, they don't have a letter saying that they have approval to extend anything. That the next, and perhaps the council's letter says when, who, how.
I'm not opposed to that.
Maybe you want to come talk to us?
Right.
But these are, this is, these are what ifs. We need to get a response.
That's correct.
Before we jump to any conclusion.
Conclusion.
Yep.
And the letter from the council is, Tracy, that's a great idea. Representatives too, we need to push them to persuade. We need the power of persuasion here.
It's an election year, too.
Yes.
I just feel like if we're aiming at nothing, we're going to hit it every time. So if we set a date or a goal or a regional timeframe, you know, summer, fall, something like that.
Oh, I think that response to this with something more definitive, I wouldn't go beyond the end of March.
Excellent, all right.
That's 30 days. I think 30 days is enough time to be deciding what you meant when you wrote the letter.
Anything else from the council? Because there's a number of people in the public that I believe want to speak.
I do have one more question.
Okay, Councilor here, yes.
In your experience at DEP, is it likely that they think they're in a grace period of an extension since 70 minutes or anything like that? Okay.
Not a doubt in my mind.
Okay.
One quick comment.
You're fine.
I just, it's important we hold our ground against this and fight what we believe in, but we got to do it honorably.
Yep.
By getting the answers to our questions. We don't want to be slinging mud and be stooped to anybody's level.
That said, there's only so much that we can be expected to.
We want to be viewed as credible.
That's right. Yeah, that's a great way.
Which we are.
We are.
We want to keep it that way.
And the more one foot in front of the other that you approach this in terms of persistence and facts and requests for timelines, quantifiable things, the more seriously the town will be taken.
Yes.
The worst thing that can happen is if we run around screaming and shout and then we've dispelled all of our energy into anger and none into actually making a change. So, and we won't be taken seriously if we do it.
I think any other approach would kick back to this approach, right? If we went to the attorney, they'd say first try this or first try that.
Yep.
Okay. Folks from the public. Nobody? Okay.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Ralph Chapman. I live here in Bucksport with my wife on School Street. And thank you for the opportunity to make some commentary about the situation with the landfill. Just briefly, I recognize some immediate problems, that the landfill has been out of compliance for many years and continues to be, that there's a daily discharge of pollution into the river that's out of compliance. There's, as of this past week at least, a trust issue with the DEP. I don't have to go into a lot of detail here, but the behavior that I'm hearing of what has happened at the DEP is the type of behavior that appears as though it could be unethical, even illegal. And I don't have to go further than that, but the perception, one needs to, as Mayor has indicated before, perception is important as well as the facts. And when you have a pattern of behavior that is indistinguishable from, for instance, a bribery situation, it lowers the confidence that members of the public like myself have in the institution. And I will say that there is an ongoing trust issue with the parent of Bucksport Mill LLC. And if you're not familiar with what that company has done in similar situations, very similar situations elsewhere in the past, I hope that you'll take the time to learn about the experienced multi-year litigation experiences of a town about five times the size of Bucksport. I would say bullied by the parent company of Bucksport Mill LLC, I'm speaking of Sartell, One might look at litigation from an even larger town in New Brunswick. I'm not terribly familiar with these, so I'll leave it there, but we have a trust issue with the parent company. So I'd like to make two comments. One is what long-term strategy might the council keep in mind? And then some short-term items that you might want to consider. I'm very pleased that the town has, of Bucksport, has an ordinance that we did last year. It is supposed to provide the town with the paperwork that a private landfill owner gives to the DEP. Copies of that by our local law should come to us, and it looks as though it hasn't, so we have a problem there. We also have in that ordinance the establishment of the town's legal authority to do enforcement action. And keeping in mind what the limits of that enforcement action could be or what the opportunities for that enforcement action could be is well worth knowing as we proceed. But as good as that ordinance may be, and knowing the history that I mentioned before of other towns undergoing considerable litigation, I'm aware that the ordinance is not enough protection for the town in the long term for assuring or being able to maintain the quality of life and the health and well-being of its town citizens on the basis of that ordinance alone. So a long-term strategy recommendation is to consider additional ordinances that are overlapping in some certain respects. And in particular, one that comes to mind is developing a water quality protection ordinance or ordinances. And this would be a, perhaps a lengthy undertaking and would involve a variety of, might involve other... other municipalities in the region because it could be a regional type of action. But I, I think that's a direction that is worth considering for the future. I think another long-term strategy is to help pressure the state government, and that probably means the legislature, to provide a comprehensive solid waste management in accordance with a state policy, which as you know, puts landfill disposal of solid waste as the least desirable mechanism. And I think it's, it's an appropriate active, action on the part of Bucksport Town Council to participate in providing pressure to the state government in order to solve not only a statewide problem, but as it is reflected in our local problem. And then of course, also as a long-term strategy, it's worth stating that we can work on solid waste reduction of our own municipal waste by a variety of techniques. And I, I think as stewards of government, you're in a position to help encourage the town to do that as well. Now, more immediately, my first immediate suggestion was to have the council write a letter. And that suggestion has already been made and you've discussed it. And I think it's very appropriate to have the letter coming from the council members, especially in order to avoid any further complications of the potential conflict of interest that our town manager might run into relative to future things that come to the Board of Environmental Protection. I think that the letter that you send to, and I assume that you would send it to the commissioner of the DEP, would ask for a complete accounting of what has transpired and why. And one other short-term suggestion to keep in mind is to consider a mechanism for increasing what I will call political visibility, political pressure, is to involve the town voters in, I believe that you have the power to put on a town warrant, an advisory question for voters to provide advice to the town council. And that advisory question could be something along the lines of, do you favor a continuation and expansion of a private landfill? And by asking that question of voters, one might anticipate what the voter's response would be, but at least you could then have a, an actual vote. And in the process of voters considering that question, they would be more, have more motivation to be informed about what the situation is. So having made those brief suggestions and those comments, I thank you very much and happy to be helpful in any way I can as you go forward. I can take any questions now or at any time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, I saw your hand and I saw Don's as well. Go, Bill. And then Don still wants to.
I'm Bill Tomasco. I'm a part of the citizens group that we spoke of. And we worked last time, as you know, to have forums, did interviews with ERU, wrote letters. I'm a little more anxious than you are about this meeting at the DEP. I mean, this is the quintessential back room meeting. Nothing was generated, no email. I know what you're saying, Steve, you don't want to take too aggressive approach and we don't want to come out firing with attorneys litigating immediately. But no emails setting the meeting up, no record of the meeting, no letter to AIM, no letter to Karen Canooty to write her response letter? I mean, it's unheard of in this electronic age. It's absolutely unheard of. So what I'm looking for, and I think what the citizens are looking for, is a lead role by the council for you guys to take the leadership role. And I think you're going to have to. And I think that starts with a letter. And, but I think you have to see where the DEP is on this because Susan's letter, Susan's letter was fabulous. I mean, it laid it completely out. But what they have done, maybe Karen Canooty's letter helped us because what they done, what they have done was so little. I mean, if you look at that letter, it's a joke. They put up a no trespassing sign. They established a soil stock pile for fire control. I mean, frozen dirt in the winter is going to stop a landfill fire. They installed a metal grate over a culvert and they expected the culvert. I mean, it's, it was so little that it's amazing, but they've been completely non-compliant. They've never been cited for anything, as you said. And I don't know if we can, we can ask the DEP to cite them for something. But I think it has to start with a letter. But I understand about not litigating, but you get to a tipping point with this group where you've got to feel where they are. We, I don't necessarily think we have to be their buddies in this case. I think we have to be leery of it. We have to negotiate and cooperate, but their statement that in light of the current limitations on landfill disposal capacity, they're not going to base it on facts, they're not going to base it on science, they're going to base it on what they have failed to, what the state has failed to do in the past to deal with solid waste disposal. And are we going to be the solution to that problem? We can't let that happen. I mean, you, you can't let that happen. This, I think this is going to be the most important decision this council has ever made in regards to the town. Because it will destroy the town. It will, I grew up in the town site, it will destroy the town site. We, Debbie and I built our first house on Scotts Lane. That neighborhood would be destroyed. It's right next to it. The property values will go down the tubes. Drake's Lane, people that live on, on the River Road. I, I understand about what you're saying about negotiating and being good citizens with them, but this, this is scary what they did. I, I've never heard of any, the DE commissioner didn't know, DEP commissioner, Karen Canooty, they're, the DEP is not only willing to, to do things like this, they're throwing Karen Canooty under the bus. I mean, their own employee they don't care about. They didn't, she was part of the meeting and then they make her write this letter to flip her decision that she really was, she's, I know her, I like her, she's very bright. I mean, that completely flipped that decision. And, and, and she was thrown under the bus. So they'll throw employees under the bus, they'll have these secret meetings, and they talk about current limitations of landfill disposal. That, that's the scariest line in this letter. So I, I, we're looking for your leadership. And I, but I think it has to be an aggressive leadership, keeping in mind that, I understand, I do it for a living, I always negotiate first, but sometimes you have to do more than negotiate. So I just hope you keep that in mind as we go forth. And, and I think that in this, the mission of the DEP is that they're responsible for protecting and restoring mains and natural resources and enforcing state environmental laws. Doesn't look like they're thinking about that in this letter. So I think we have to keep that in mind. Okay, thanks.
Bill, I'd agree with you on a lot of it. It's just the point I was making before about, I'd like to get the answer from the DEP.
Oh, yeah.
About the truth.
Yeah, I think we have to have it. It, I think it's going to be real important. And I think you have to underst, I think we have to understand, and you're more politically connected and know more about than I do, but what's the governor's position on this? Did they feel there was tacit approval? Why would they do this? Why would they be willing to do this without the DEP commissioner knowing about it, if that's the case? And the governor's office not knowing about it, the DEP commission didn't know about it? Why do they feel that two mid-level bureaucrats could do this? They must believe that's coming from the top? Or, or they wouldn't have done it?
I think it's really important in the letter that we're really clear and specific why, how was this, how did this process happen? Like you were saying.
Yeah.
Give them an opportunity to not show us or show us.
Right, yeah. Who, who, where did this come from? Two, two mid-level or upper mid-level, I don't even know who it was, but they weren't the top and they weren't the bottom. So how, why would two mid-level bureaucrats be willing to take a meeting? And why was nothing, that is insane. Nothing was written? You wouldn't follow up with a letter to AIM saying you have six months? You wouldn't send an email, these people didn't send an email to Karen Canooty, say, we want you to write a letter to Susan Wassad. That's what we want you to do. And we want you to tell her of the decision. And we want to put in, now how did Karen know to put in all this stuff here? Did they verbally tell her this is all the stuff? No, probably that came from maybe a letter from AIM that said they did all this stuff? Where is that letter? That wasn't part of this meeting? You know, it, something's wrong in Denmark as far as I'm concerned. I, I really think so. So, and, and to follow up on what Ralph said, he's never got me back here. To follow up on what Ralph said about AIM, about St. John. St. John, New Brunswick just issued to AIM, they took away their scrapyard permit. And they did it because they, there was a fire in September that burned for forty hours and put toxic fumes all over St. John, New Brunswick. And they found out they had, didn't have a proper emergency plan. There was a, there was, they, afterwards, they did a study of what happened. No proper emergency plan, scrap piles were too big, significant risk of fire. Since 2011, at that St. John facility, there's been 181 explosions and 22 fires. So that's the track record of AIM. That's the track record of AIM in St. John, New Brunswick. So that's really what we're ultimately against. We're against a corporation that doesn't care. They don't care. They don't.
Let me tell you something else, Bill, with that, is that keeping, from my perspective, keeping this communication open and trying, from where we're sitting right now, is what is going to be a key part in keeping us from winding up like those other communities.
Yeah.
If we close everything down and shut down any communication, we could run into serious problems that could.
Right. I, I agree a hundred percent, but I have to, you're right. You have to keep it. I, I trust Susan's abilities and I trust you to do the right thing, but I think you have to consider what the dragging is on the other side. You really have to consider it. These are bad actors. They'll do anything, they'll litigate, and you have to be willing to be aggressive. I don't think you have to go right into litigation, but you have to be willing to hire experts, attorneys, and spend money. You, hopefully it won't come to that. Hopefully, there is no option. There, it's, it's, it's a bad idea. I agree with that letter a hundred percent. I just hope the DEP does. I just hope the DEP does.
I just want to make, the, the goal that I was trying to express isn't just that the landfill doesn't open. The goal is that that site is capped and closed.
Right.
What I want to avoid is it just not happening and sitting there as licensed capacity. And in ten years, when someone has some other, something.
Right.
That it rears its ugly head. Capped and closed ends it. There doesn't need to be a long-term strategy if it's capped and closed, other than monitoring wells in the thirty years that are required. But, but for me anyway, and the council, I think is in the same place, it's not just that it doesn't happen, it's that it's capped and closed. That we take this off the table as a topic for this community in the future. And that's the only way to do it, is capped and closed. Just getting them to not do something only means 1.1 million cubic yards of capacity space that's licensed in the state of Maine is sitting there. And I would prefer it wasn't sitting there.
Yeah, and let's hope you get back to where Karen was in your, in her August fourth letter.
She, she didn't recant her, she reported what was done. She, she was not su, she had to receive permission to write that first letter that required the closure plan. She was not supported in that by the subsequent meeting. But she didn't change her mind. She wrote to me what came out of the meeting that others had. There's a new one.
Wow.
This isn't, this wasn't her decision. This was a decision of others, maybe not in support of her, after it had already been supported the first time.
Well, hopefully that can happen. Well. Thank you.
How do we enforce getting some action on, we didn't receive any paperwork with their communication, but we're supposed to?
Well, I don't know what, I had asked for what there was and I don't have, I hope your microphone worked. I've asked for everything. I've got what I've got. I mean, that.
Which is nothing as far as that, that meeting is concerned?
No, that, I specifically asked for any record related to that meeting and got nothing.
So what, how do we react to that, where it's an ordinance?
Well, that, you mean, they didn't notify that it was going to be a meeting or there?
We're supposed to receive all correspondence, correct? And we didn't?
Well, you need to, all correspondence, I'm going to look at exactly what it says. But there was no correspond, I, I don't, they don't have anything to send me because they didn't write anything down, as far as I can see, but I don't.
But there's got to be somewhere, is what I mean. There's got to be somewhere.
I mean, for them to have reported the little bits that they did, I, I was under the understanding we're supposed to receive that as, I mean.
Well, we got the annual report and all that stuff is in the annual report that is what they've done. I mean, that, that's not new news. We knew that they had piled dirt, put up a no trespassing sign and, you know, that was their, the annual report. But it's not that the stuff that is really, needs to be addressed is, is not stuff that was done, in my estimation.
But obviously, back to, and I'll be good, is that there, even you're having a hard time, please don't let me put words in your mouth, understanding how this meeting could take place and some of this could be drafted without any record-keeping on any level, especially in a virtual meeting where the machine can do it for it. I know you didn't say that, I've added that, but my point is, is that whether that's true or not, I'm not, I can't judge that. But the perception that's created by that is not a good one. That's my only point here. My only point is that there's a, there's a problematic perception that's been created as a result of this correspondence, and I am encouraging the DOP, DEP to resolve that as soon as possible.
We were suspicious before, now we're.
I'm not suspicious of the DEP necessarily.
I am.
I, well, I want, I want to see, I want, I want to know the truth. Because as I said, perception becomes reality in the absence, especially in the absence of truth. I want to get to the bottom of the truth. And if that was, if, I did, I called it out a little bit. You've created a terrible perception here, it's time to fix that. That's my only point.
And they hold the most power to be able to help us.
That's right.
We're ready to most.
Yep.
So would it be helpful for you in the drafting of the letter if we emailed you key points or key concerns from us as councilors?
Absolutely. This is not a poll project. Yep, I would want, I would love input on that. I'm going to be reviewing it with the town manager. I will bring it to all of you to read it, and there will be transparency in the process, I can assure you. I, I mean, if that's what the council's pleasure is, I didn't mean to assume anything.
That is, oh, yeah, that's great.
Anyone else from the, Don? Anyone else from the, Don?
Don White, Bucksport, Maine. This issue has been boiling for a while, certainly boiling with the citizens of Bucksport. I appreciate the tone of this council tonight, and I appreciate the process. DEP has acquired, don't take no notes, and we'll change our mind. That's a perception that I have. Perhaps it's even the truth. To rely totally on the DEP to take care of us, from my perspective, is naive. I understand it's the process, I understand it's what we have to do. But I also have, I don't have the knowledge that you do, Susan, of landfills. I don't. I have done my due diligence for quite a while. I have looked into other landfill situations. I have looked into AIM situations. I've spent a lot of time doing this. A lot of my colleagues have spent a lot of time together, and we've done our due diligence. And I think we've done a good job as citizens. I think we need to be protected, and I think this council needs to take the leadership, as pointed out. I think the citizens of Bucksport have been leaders in this, and I appreciate what we've done. We need to work together, or we could be in trouble. I attended a hearing on the Juniper Ridge landfill last week, in which the state was considering an application by Casella to extend their ability to run Juniper Ridge for another six years, from 2034 to 2040. They have capacity, stated capacity, their own stated capacity, just, that's what they want for a license. They have a stated capacity of four or five years to go up there. And then they will need another extension or a land extension, in other words. So there's, you have two separate issues. We've got a letter before us that says, oh, by the way, one of the reasons that we want to give them another, another shot at this is for existing landfill capacity in the state may be running out. I take that seriously. While I understand 1.1 million cubic yards is available, I also understand, unless I am completely wrong, that there is an ability to extend land up there. I believe they own more land than just the, whatever it is, forty-eight acres that the existing landfill is on. There's, there's additional space, and they may be able to create additional space. And once these things start rolling, we don't have to invent, we just had to listen to our friends at Juniper Ridge, who've gone through hell for the last twenty-something years, and continue to do it today. The hearing up there last week was an eye-opening experience by very bright people speaking to the state, to the Department of Environmental Protection. There were people from all over the state. There was one wishy-washy person, and the rest were saying, please, help us, help us. But they've said, "Help us" before. Juniper Ridge has been out of compliance for so long. This one has been out of compliance for so long. The North Slope, right now, has got a tarp on it. Bring your boat tarps, throw it up, throw it up on there. They're supposed to be good for ten-year max at the most. That was installed in 2001, or 2000, I can't remember which one. I'm close, I'm real close. It's a mess. The Leachate system's a mess. We need leadership, strong leadership, and we can't be naive enough to think the DEP is going to be able to totally handle us. Yes, we have to go through the process, and yes, we have to consider them our friends. But is Bucksport also willing to take care of itself? I know its citizens are and will do it. We want your help. Thank you.
My name is Tom Mock, and I'm new to Bucksport. We've been here eighteen months. However, I just want to add two cents, and it won't be well thought out, but I feel dissed, and I think maybe you all should feel dissed. And although the process shall be calm and collected, I don't think you should, as you draft your letter, and hit all the points that need to be hit, I don't think you should necessarily pull any punches. You don't have to say this is a punch, but there is a way to underline exactly what you would like to have happen. And some of that is just getting the response that hasn't happened. And you've been taking notes in the same reaction. But we're not alone. You can take that same letter, and I don't know the proprietaries of that idea, but that same letter could be sent to representatives. That same letter doesn't have to just go to DEP. That same letter, well-structured, well-defined, and fast turnaround, would be important to put out there for as many different ways as you all deem responsible. But I come from working as a lowly IT guy in an environmental engineering firm, and I've watched on the periphery companies from when I began in 1985, use the same old standard operating procedures on this project site, on that project site, on this project site, and you take what you can get. A lot of those cooperative ventures used a strategy of just non-response and delay. And often, the local municipalities did not have any resources or ability to tackle such a large idea. And then, like Ralph said, this company has instances in lots of different situations where it does the, pick the lowest fruit, uh, fruit off the apple tree that sits by the road and do that, and say that that's good enough, or, you know, give us more time. Sounds like we've given them lots and lots of time, and the same thing elsewhere. And if the DEP is in a rock and a hard space, as near as I consider, because landfills are, probably should have been the last choice, but there's opportunity to kick the can down the road. I would not like Bucksport to be that can. So as you choose your wording carefully and send it through, don't forget to act pissed in as good a way as you were probably able to do. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just when I was going to try to do better. That is a valid point of sending it to our state congressmen, state senators, because Penobscot River, just as recent, is getting, in their standards...
Hundred and eighty-three million dollars in cleanup money to the Penobscot right now through the Holterchem settlement. A hundred and eighty-three million is devoted to the cleanup of the river through that settlement. And the idea that the local group is good, we won't be alone. There are other entities, Native Americans and others, who would strongly oppose this kind of, uh, abuse of the Penobscot and, um, in particular, area, which was...
I just read an article on this not too long ago about, it was declared disaster, what was it, eighties, mid-eighties? And the improvement that they've made in the past thirty years. And this is certainly not one of those.
Anything else from the public? Anything else from the council?
Gentlemen.
You're sure?
Yeah. I guess I'm, uh, yeah. Jacques Delapierre with Bucksport. I'm very new to this game. I perfectly know Don, and he's been briefing me on this, and I've met you. But I, I think an approach I would take is one of deep confusion. You know, how did, how is this, and I'm being kind of a little facetious here, obviously. We're, we're dealing with a very polished machine, and Bucksport's small change, and they have a process. Let's put that in the background. I think that's the real issue, I don't want to talk about that. What I'm saying is, how did the EPA, the DEP, excuse me, how did they let the, you know, we need like an explanation. I'm, I'm confused how this breakdown happened. And what you, you want is really, just, could you explain it to me? You know, as, not being confrontational, because I think if you go strong and go for the legal action, you're dead, and we're dead. You know, we've fallen into the machine's trap, because that's what they want. They have the attorneys, they have everything lined up, and we're going to lose that battle. So I think at this point, we have to be, they're our friend. Can you, what happened, what, what happened with this meeting? Why, why aren't there any notes? Why isn't there some kind of record? What, what, I don't think any of us, any doubt what really happened. And that's what we're trying to flush out, obviously, with this approach. But just, I think it's, um, don't be naive, but be naive is, um, I just had one situation. I was dealing with an insurance company, and if you, if I took them on, I had very good legal counsel say, you know, don't go after them legally, just have them explain the process that they had. And how did this happen? And then definitely share that explanation with everybody. Every congressman, the governor, and everybody that you can, because they, do they owe us an explanation a little bit in this, what's happened? Are we entitled to know what happened?
Absolutely. Still located here, we have the right to the truth when we ask a question.
And we don't have that.
We have information that defies logic.
That's my point. Right. But I think we really know the answer, but, but we don't want to say we know the answer. We want to just...
I can tell you what I've been told. I can tell you that, that explanation isn't logical.
So that's what we have...
Does it mean that, that the council isn't going to ask the question in a different way?
Right. So I guess that's my point. And maybe, I think there are tendencies to want to get, you know, well, we're aware of what's happening, but I think you have to draw it out. That can be my advice to you, draw it out, and what, what happened? I'm, I'm confused with this process, and this illogical process. None of us are confused, I think we know darn well what's happening, but I just started getting something in writing and starting there, and it, it's going to be a lengthy process, and that's, that's what it has to be.
We could put both suggestions together and be confused and pissed.
I'm pissed.
I'll leave that to you.
Two roles I play.
I hope that helps. I mean, I'm just, I just, I just think that that's what I'm hearing, is like I, and to your point, I think that's what you're saying. You want to, that's what we have to do right now, is draw this out, and, and I think that, that, that approach. I have some other ideas, but as you get, yeah, enough said. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just one more thought, Paul, sorry. The, my colleague Ralph brought up the, the possible political pressure that, while it's not binding, does have an effect. I've seen it happen in this town. A town vote on this issue, while perhaps non-binding, perhaps nobody, would have a tremendous political effect. Hardly any politician or regulator will want to go against the wishes of the town, if it's taken to a vote, in my opinion. Just subject to consider if we get down that road, but you're writing a letter that's the beginning of some stuff as a representation. Susan wrote an excellent letter as town manager, and now you as council are going to do that. But we also have options like that, political pressure. Decisions are a lot, a lot of times, political, not just on the facts and things, they're just, they're just political. So I appreciate you considering that.
Could we do an action quick enough to put it on June, or would it have to be November?
Um, it's a, the, the presidential election is going to be your biggest turnout. If you want to provide numbers, don't do the June election, because three hundred votes isn't going to persuade anyone. But if you get to November, when we have a huge part of our electorate who vote, that is a, a larger representation voter-wise than, June is a small turnout. The primary in March will be a small turnout. We don't have time to do that one yet.
Uh, anyone else? Thank you, everyone. Appreciate your contribution and your submissions. Uh, let's see. We do have one item on the agenda, which is resolved, 2024-40, to approve the Hancock County, Maine Hazard Litigation Plan, the 2024 update that was included in your packet. Most approved? There's been a second of questions. All those in favor?
Signatures, um, it, it says by the line, it's councilors, deputy mayor, and mayor, so...
Uh, next, we have resignations, appointments, assignments, and elections, and out of the meeting earlier this evening from the Services Committee, the council is being asked to consider both Robert England and Josh Jackson for the baseball. Most approved?
Second.
Second, questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Uh, let's see, approval of quit claims, discharges, and deeds, we have none. Next would be the town manager's report.
I am happy to report that the survey for the 917 River Road private cemetery has, is finally complete. And we should be able to move forward with that project later this year, because it defined the boundaries and identified the location of the cemetery, which is what we've been wrestling with now for several years. A reminder that there will be an author visit at the Alamo on Thursday, February 29th at 5:30 PM. We encourage everyone to stop by and visit with well-known author, Arthur de Buss, III. It will also be the last opportunity to get in on the raffle of many wonderful items as part of the library's annual fundraiser. At the Bucksport Service Network meeting this morning, we got an update on the efforts of the Community Garden Committee. They have found a location on an empty private lot on Federal Street, and will be taking a phased approach to the installation of the garden there, thanks to property owner Ron Russell for providing the space for this group to bring this long-awaited goal to life. I met with the representatives of the Bucksport Bay Healthy Communities Coalition on Tuesday. The town has an MOU with this organization, and they provide assistance with keeping the town on track as an AARP, Age and Ability Friendly Community. They assist Habitat for Humanity with a senior home repair program. They operate the Thrive Program, which works to help keep seniors in their home by coordinating resources for them, and they facilitate the monthly Bucksport Area Service Network meetings that we have. There are currently thirty people in the Thrive Program, and it continues to grow. The MOU expired in 2023, but I will be bringing you an updated version soon. This work that this organization is doing furthers several of the goals of our comprehensive plan and keeps us in compliance as an AARP, Age and Ability Friendly Community. The library will be hosting a NARCAN training on Tuesday, March 26th, at 2:00 PM at the library. This is free and open to the public. I contacted... I contacted Revision Energy and was, in response to questions asked by the council about what a buyout of the Array on the Highway Garage would entail in terms of disposal, et cetera, and I received that information. I, it's attached to this, there's four pages of emails that talk about the Array removal being $132 an hour for 50 hours at the 2024 rates, which was $6,600, whatever that would be worth in 25 years, is the... And the disposal, they, they have cited that disposal material is expected to be via recycling and not landfilling, so no additional cost to the town, and there's more information in the emails that are attached. I attached them so that you can, um, see what is projected as cost savings, and I'll put this together as part of our budget discussion for you to look at then, and you can decide whether you wish to pursue ownership or remain with the current arrangement of what's on that. And that's it.
Thank you for that, Sue. I know that was probably a lot of work, but most times I ask what do you have to...
Any other questions? Let me sign this first. Uh, next, we have, we need to set a public hearing, and or hold a public hearing, and approval of any licenses or permits. The first item is to set a public hearing on the first reading of what happened earlier this evening, the amendments to the Town Code, Chapter 6, Business Regulations, Sections 2.3 and 2.6. Uh, we will set that for March 4th. Can we go to that six?
No, 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 seven. It's a, the public hearing...
Oh, it's a public, I'm sorry. Yes, it's during me, I'm sorry, I'll be okay.
We don't come in early for those.
Okay, yep, thank you. Um, and then we have the festival license application from the town of Bucksport regarding the Bucksport Bay Festival. I will assume everyone's had a chance to read that as well.
Yes.
Questions? All is in favor?
Oh, we need a motion.
Oh, yeah.
Second?
All is in favor? Opposed? I believe that once a meeting goes beyond 90 minutes, the difference between minute 89 and 91 is huge. And I'm doing everything I can to demonstrate that for everyone this evening, so I'll, I'll rate it in here. Uh, next is discussion of items not on the agenda for either the council or the public. We'll start with the council.
I've got one. We have several larger-scale challenges that we keep getting presented with, and we have a lot more components that we keep adding to our function as a town in regards to boards and our procedures. And, uh, and we also have a lot of new people on boards with our procedures in the past, in the different roles I've played with, uh, Board of Appeals, Planning Board, chairing at the council, whatever. Uh, we've done main municipal trainings along the way. They both, they've been hosted here, they've been online. Uh, I've been to Bangor to the Cross Center for them. Can we develop an outline for the boards that we have, such as, uh, uh, the Board of Appeals, Planning Board, et cetera, and give the people on those boards, uh, trainings that we need them to complete, uh, so they can be more effective in their roles as they're getting presented with larger-scale challenges for these things?
Yes.
We had a meeting last night that was the first time that board had met in five years, and I know the Board of Appeals meets very rarely, and I'd just like to enable these people to be as effective as they can be in these roles.
I will check with MMA, all of these things, there's trainings for all of these kinds of boards. Some is Zoom, some is in-person. I, I will, I will get an outline of what's available and distribute it to the various boards. The town pays for these trainings.
Yes, yes.
A lot of these boards need additional members.
Right, absolutely. And I don't, and I, and I want to encourage membership and participation, but I, and I, I think it would be kind of a, a good trade-off, like not only will we, would we like you involved in this, but we'll show you how to do it.
Yeah.
You know, I think that could be a big part of it. Is it reasonable to aggressive, uh, to set a timeline for each member of each board to have completed one of these trainings, let's say, this year, by the end of the year? Is that a, is that a reasonable request?
You can have that, that they have to have received training within six months of appointment, or one year of appointment.
Okay.
You can...
I like that idea, I think it's really important.
I think, I just feel like we, we keep getting next level-up scenarios, and we, we need to level up to it as well, and I think this would, this would get us there. I just don't want to put any, like, a lot of these are volunteer, we're all here on, you know what I mean? We, what we do, we pay, et cetera, et cetera. So I just want to be respectful of the people who are putting their time into these positions as well, so a reasonable timeframe of completion could be...
Right, and enable them...
But they should probably be paid like that as a meeting for that training.
I think that is how we're, how it's structured, is it?
No, what we do is pay for the course.
Okay.
We don't, we don't, because the only boards that get stipends is the Planning Board.
Okay, and that's probably where the, where I got that from.
That if the Planning Board had a meeting to do training, the Planning Board would get paid.
Okay. Yeah, that's where I got that.
But no other boards, other than the council and the Planning Board?
I think that's a worthwhile investment.
I do, too. I think it kind of goes both ways, Mayor, in that, you know, it's sort of, it's volunteer, but it's also a volunteer who's representing citizens, and citizens deserve a well-trained volunteer.
Absolutely, yep. And, and nobody's going to volunteer and, and not want to be enabled to do the job.
Right.
There's already enough, you know, when you're new on a board, there's enough anxiety about saying the wrong thing or whatever. If we can eliminate even a portion of that, then we've done right by them as well as the tact of the citizens of the town, so. Yep, I wish you'd hear it. Thank you. Anyone else from the council? All the public. Upcoming public hearings, designation of topics for committee assignment, and scheduling of committee meetings. What committee meetings do we need before the next meeting?
None that I'm aware of.
Anyone else aware of that?
However, if that changes, in the next two weeks, I will let you know.
All right. So as of now, our next meeting will be the March, March 14th at 7:00 PM, despite my effort to hold a public hearing outside of those...
We have an economic development meeting, and it is outside organizations on the 11th.
The Monday before the next council meeting? Yep, thank you. And if there's nothing else, next item, Chair wants to add motion to adjourn. No, smooth adjourn.
Second.
All is in favor? Thank you, everyone.